Hi, everyone in the chat. Yeah, on the side of the desk, I'm gonna have like posters and stuff. We'll do some moving around as well. Oh, good to meet you, Alex. Thank you for coming. So in your bag, you have materials. And one of the two materials that I want you to interact with is the pen, Cindy Povit, and posters. And we have two questions for you today. Well, we have many questions, but one of them to start with is I want you to allocate three posters to where you think funding should go in our community, and then three posters where you think funding should go in our city. And you can just use one word, you can do sentences, whatever comes best for you as a communicator.
I need my posters to let them know.
I wonder if you can make me and Amanda. But I think she would have to do it.
I think, I think you can.
I tried.
Okay.
I mean, actually, I didn't try. Here we go. Maybe through participants. Spotlight. No, no, that's everyone's spotlight. Okay, Amanda, if you do get a speaker view, you'll see us, right?
Yes.
Welcome, babies, back home. Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven. We'll start in five minutes. If you're done writing on your post-it, and you'll rush if you're not, for the posters that are about the community, where does funding should go? These posters are put together here. And then for the city, it's over there. And if you need direction, Rochelle will help direct you to step off. Also, don't worry, don't worry about handwriting, don't worry about... This is a judgment grade, so it's also a church, so it's extra judgment grade. Hey, looks like all of our posters are up. Really exciting. Um, I can't, let me just do a test. You guys can hear me, right, Amanda? Great, great. Okay, so at this time, what we're gonna do is we actually decide where funding should go in the city and in the community. And I'm really curious to see the answers. So what we'll do here is now Rochelle is gonna grab about anywhere between three to six posters on that side. And I'm gonna grab a few random ones here, and we'll talk about it and see where people... Go. I'm sure there's so much more. Any random ones, just randomly pick. Don't read before. That's not fair. Just read. Okay, come on over. Thank you. Go, I keep getting muted. Um, make sure you're ready to share your answers on where you think funding should go in the city and in the community. And you could put your answers in the chat. Amanda, who is our awesome facilitator in the chat, is gonna read the answers out loud. Literally Zoom teaching. I respond, I can deserve. All right, so, so far, we've got open and free Wi-Fi. District 32 small businesses, grand building education, east hall, affordable housing, school, programming, night, parades, festivals, parks, environmental conservation, for times specific rules. The city has public transportation from rural boroughs, environment, mental health, and expensive schools. Right? So based on where you think funding goes, do you feel, or raise your hand if you feel like funding actually goes here, effectively? Right? I agree. I'm Felicia, I'm the Democratic nominee for city council here in our District 32. It's a pleasure to have all of you here at our town hall. Such an intimate space. We do have folks, we're also on Zoom who couldn't make it. Uh, for folks on Zoom, what are some answers, Amanda, that folks shared for city and for community funding?
Yeah, um, people share some really great answers. Um, some of them are violence prevention, housing, and healthcare. Um, also climate resi...
Go ahead.
Um, climate resilience, healthcare, and the arts.
That's why. Beautiful, climate resilience, healthcare, and the arts. Anything else?
Um... Sorry, I'm strolling. Mental health and homelessness, um, and community land trust.
Community land trust. Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for sharing. Appreciate it. So because we're in such an intimate space, I'd love for us all to get a chance to know who is here. So you can say your name, your phone number, and what neighborhood you're from.
Oh, sure. Hi, hello, my name is Cindy. And I live right here on 97th Street, South, in Rockville Beach. And I'll be here for going on a vacation.
Welcome to me, yay!
I'm kind of saying, uh, she's over there. Um, and I actually live over in West Lafayette. Um, and I have been in Rockwood for a while.
Katie, can you introduce yourself? Katie's the fourteenth member.
Hello, I'm Katie, her, her name's Super Post-It Girl.
Rochelle, I'll teach there.
Hi, everyone, Rochelle. I'm also, she's her post-it girl. Just by the end of the week, she's there.
Lucky, I'm Seth Sheer, very proud of her. I'm Felicia's campaign manager. I've not lived in North Carolina in a while, but I spent a lot of time here, and I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you, and hi to everyone in the chat. We just finished introducing ourselves. So now I wanted to just share our mission, our goal for today, which is essentially to give you information on how city council, uh, works with city council jurisdiction is. Talk about budget and talk about what it is at the community that we can secure for funding here for things that matter to us, like our schools, like our parks, like our environmental resilience, and how that can happen. Um, and of course, we want you to feel empowered. Take the information you're learning here about our campaign, about what you learned, about city budget, city council jurisdiction, and share it with someone else who probably doesn't have our campaign before, or maybe is skeptical about our campaign, or just had never been involved in the electoral process before and wants to learn more. Um, so that's the tools that we're gonna give you in hopes that you're gonna share with other people. All right? Some norms for today are step up, step back. If you are sharing a lot out loud, notice someone sitting next to you hasn't had a chance to share. Uh, feel free to share, but also realize whether or not you're taking up the space uh, here in terms of sharing. Second is share what you know and understand that this is not a space where we're judging you as a person. We are listening and hearing each other from our perspectives that are breaking into the space, and that's what we're working on. Um, and in this case, because it's a safe space, we want you to feel validated and safe to share it. Um, and then, of course, three, uh, we want you to feel like this is a space where you are expecting and accepting non-closure. This is a continuous learning process, and being involved in politics, I'm learning, you're learning, we're all going to be here to share with each other. Um, and that's most, that's how we see the way it's going to be, and hopefully in the future too. So we're gonna get started with city budget. In your bag, you have a sheet that looks like this, it has a circle. And it says legislative and budget timeline here to see. Uh, do you have any second? Any action? Yeah. There you go, perfect. So you'll see that our budget timeline for New York City budget is pretty long and intense. Okay? And I wanna talk about the three jurisdictions of our New York City budget. The first is our expense budget. That's the cost of our city. From literally how much people get paid, for example, if you work in BSNY, anywhere sanitation worker, how much your wages, to how much money we're owing in a city for infrastructure. Then we're gonna take with our capital budget. Capital budget is our long-term investment. How much we're spending long-term on school infrastructure, streetcar parks. And you have a revenue budget, and that is determined from how much taxes we're getting out of here in the process. And it helps determine how we spend, spend correctly. In the city, a lot of, I kinda wanna hear what you think, who decides on our, who creates and decides on New York City budget? Daddy, you can't capture any of your... Daddy's been working, sorry? Okay, yes. Not really. It's actually our mayor. Our mayor is the person that proposes our New York City budget. They have the mayor, they have the largest jurisdiction on our budget, and then it goes to city council, and they make adjustments or negotiations. This is where things get really spicy. Because this is where in budget hearings, our committee of finance decides where monies were reallocated or allocated to. And this is the most intense process, because as you saw during the pandemic, our budget was one of the tension, especially when it came to how much we allocated for our law enforcement budget. Now, the mayor proposes an annual expense budget. It goes to city council for review. City council makes adjustments, boom, negotiations. Sometimes we hear that our community members need more funding for X, Y, Z, or local CBOs need more funding, or maybe we wanna reallocate something because we're spending too much money in a certain area. This is where all that happens. But everyone must reach an agreement by... For the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, we were literally negotiating a hundred billion dollars about. Came out to ninety-eight point two million, billion, excuse me, but it's around and about a billion. Fourteen billion dollars in that budget is probably, two hundred billion dollars went to M and A, with an addition of sixteen million for overtime. Their budget came up to a total of five point four billion. Thirty million went to tourism, with an addition of a promise of something called the cleaning up board, where we'll be giving ten thousand residents across New York City a job to open up. This is something I'm really excited to explore, because there's so many parts of our district that are being actually equitable to people. Um, especially areas of urban park, and looking at parks, it's a lot of tours where there's a border between the thirty-first and the thirty-second and the fifth district, and the extra clear. I would love to see community that was employed.
Felicia, I'm just sorry, I'm gonna pause you. Do you mind speaking up just a little more? Our friends on Zoom, we're doing our best to make our sound really good for you, okay?
Okay. Oh, I hold my mask. Oh, okay. Four million for scholarships, for QD. Uh, and these scholarships go to folks who give, or associate capital, socioeconomic income, are black and brown. Fifty-seven billion, uh, was allocated to healthcare. Twenty-four million to job training, and then one billion for basic day job. Now, there's so much more to the budget than this. There's a line by line by line process of the budget. And the budget talks about allocation for funds, for revenues, for, for things like uh, redoing a certain office space, that it has every single line by line on the budget. So even though I'd love to go into greater detail about that, these were the things that jumped out to us when we saw this budget. Now, based on what you've heard, a hundred billion dollars that New York City literally uses to keep us safe, uh, keep us economically secure, keep our communities cared for, based on what you said before, how do you feel about the way we spend money in the city? And feel free to share about it. And how do you feel about the way we spend or do not spend in our community?
I mean, one thing that sticks out to me is four million dollars for QD is just like such a silly small amount of money. That's wild. I didn't, I didn't know that.
And that's only four million specifically for scholarships.
Okay.
What else?
Um, like maybe if we can close this public school, public healthcare education.
What about... Someone, at least. I'm gonna throw a wrench at this and say that actually, our New York City budgets and New York State as a whole, and daddy correct me if I'm wrong here, we spend the most money, we allocate the most money to schools in the city and the state. Now, what do you think?
I think it's a really great exercise, but I think it's our community educated, um, statements on it, because first, we don't have like the classroom access from this year, last year, and I understand that. Um, also, we did bravely discuss something, but we don't know what the actual line is there as well, like, you may think, because Zooms are not a good, it's the only thing allocated, so I think it's a great practice to, uh, practice that's open up our eyes, but it's kind of practicing college of this way. Uh, wage-washing creation would probably be the right one right now.
And that was my point. Literally, you got my point. No one is able to actually effectively talk about our New York City budget. Not me, I don't know, Dan, maybe you, at the state level, no one. Why? Because number one, it's hard to find. It's literally really difficult to find online. It's public information. It's also many pages long. And it doesn't actually sometimes go line by line, some of these reports. You have to dig, dig, and find, and find. And this is why I think it's really important to talk about just that too. For example, when hopefully a council member, one of the things I'd love to do is during the budget process, continue to teach communities, CBOs at large, how to apply discretionary fund, how to start thinking about what funding we need in our community, because I would be the person who would back the city council advocating for those things. Now, I'm gonna show you another link. These are three of the largest ways we found community can get involved with deciding where your tax dollars go. The first is participatory budgeting. The second is discretionary funding. And the third is legislative, um, campaign. How, who here has participated in participatory budgeting or know what it is? Alice, Bethany, Ariana, do you wanna share what you think or what you know of participatory budgeting?
Well, I think, you know, you decide certain things that, uh, that they feel like should be invested in.
Alex? Oh, nice. Bethany?
All right. Oh, yeah, I know, I just, there was one where I remember, you know, the, it was different projects, like playgrounds, and some sort of like health initiative somewhere. some sort of like health initiative or something.
All like small, uh, communities. Right. District thirty-two used to participate in participatory budgeting. Um, and what we saw was, I'm really glad the peninsula had the opportunity to work on projects. But we weren't really invited in certain areas to do this at all, or I've never heard of it before. Never got a chance to work on the projects, decide how our tax dollars were spent. So when I talk about equity throughout the district, this is the missing link. Now, organizing participatory budgeting is actually really intense for a council member to do. It takes volunteers, it needs staff to do it, uh, we need people who are going to commit to creating workshops, um, on their projects, and a project idea that's budgeted out for the community as well. Because you're actually playing with here about a million, sometimes two million dollars for your community that comes out of the public budget, which is where our tax dollars go. So just offhand, if you were to think of a project you would love to see here, or how much money would we spend here? We know we talked about these specific ways you wanted to go to your community, but what would you like to see done here using these tax dollars? That you're, whatever you talked about here on the chart, I'll go with that. He said, we'll begin to design, he said, small business grant, building education, people, affordable housing for learners and renters, program like movie nights, great accessible schools, no barriers to the plans. We had one to two million dollars, and I'm sure the money could be split up into different projects, but. Where would you like to see, where do you feel like it would support place to put that money?
And it's kind of already communicated, so it's kind of, I think, part of the original. I think what, and I don't, I hope it is a resolution, I'm not smart enough to know, but all the cities have been building out to protect the erosion of our beaches. I think that's smart, because if we don't do that, does it matter if we have small businesses or a formal holiday? You won't have, you won't have that here. So I think that is the number one thing that we need to find.
I would totally agree with you. For me, I, I kind of, I've never thought about like asking for it, that I don't, I'm experienced in this. That because I, I don't, uh, see where it is, and so where it may be. Uh, to more of that, you don't like that. Just, I don't pay tax on that stuff. But the way it is, they have so many, they have to bring somebody that's more like this. So for me, that's definitely the most important thing.
Well, something I think about participatory budgeting is it's created by, its ideas created by community members. You are creating a project with one or two person people or yourself, and you're pitching essentially, you're presenting workshops on this specific project. So when it comes to resilience, even though, you know, Jenny's really important and her resilience can be important, it's almost like, how are we going to then take money and locally, super hyperlocal invested into the district? When it comes to resilience? Does that mean, maybe we are tasked with certain volunteers who are not funded to take care of marches and dunes? You know, so this is how I want us to start thinking now, moving forward. Because in hopes of, of winning this election, I want to bring participatory budgeting back. And so it's like retraining our community to think at a hyperlocal level. It's retraining our community to be like, oh, how can I feel empowered to actually take money that's, that's actually mine? Because it's tax dollars and creating workshops, creating projects around it. And who in my own community would like to be involved in that? I'd love to open up more space and talk about participatory budgeting, if anyone wants to share anything.
I'm not sure if I can pause this, but I'd be sure that budget allocation is being properly utilized. And then, or maybe it's going into the right park, pockets, or right places. Um, but then, you know, slow, like, repulsed, I don't know. So like, just kind of saying, on our, I think, keeping our community safe. We have amazing parks of our own overall, however, no one thinks, talks about people curving up dunes, no one, maybe put a lot of money into the dunes to protect us. But they didn't focus on a person spending, it's like they're pumping, it's raining, we destroyed a dune. And no one cares about them. So like, I'd be sure that actual proper allocation is, uh, even once we even get it to the right place. I think we have enough money right now for parks, but I may be, but. And I think it's that thing.
Well, I'm about to throw your question back out to everyone. How do you think you can secure funding as community members? Or at least programs or things you want to see?
I, I just, you know, it's one of those things that resonated, just like vulnerable and Robbie Beach. And it's really right on the ocean, which I'm really blessed about, but as I, you might share experiences, I realized that it comes after very significant risks and that people just love to, um, the peninsula and care about the preservation and think about like the ocean. Um, like there's this huge pipeline project that, you know, we've been talking about, or kind of pieces of cannon. Um, but I feel like education is really limited, like people don't even, aren't aware, myself included about like, you know, like I've been on Shoreham Parkway, which is, I think, the equivalent of like Park Avenue on the beach for New York City. Because, you know, you don't have anywhere else for a city people to go to kind of enjoy at the beach. Much like, you know, and then I don't feel the respect is there at the same level. Oh, that's, you know, I'm at a step, and I can see that you don't see dirt, you don't, you know, you don't see channel on the street, you don't see things that you would not expect to see, you know what I'm saying? Like, same thing here, I feel like there's not enough of a respect sometimes for the community. And a lot of that is the things there is going to be less education about what our resources are, I think. So I guess that very long-winded to say, um, for community education about things like pipeline and just advocacy opportunities, um, which I feel are always, you know. I think this is great, and I want to then, we need that, um. And I just think that's it, I mean, I, it's kind of a wall, I can say.
Yeah, no. That's a great way to garner support and empower the community to change. What's another way? Oh, Alex?
Participating in the, um, on Zoom. For it, one of those, and, um, and. Other problems, they're both wrong. There were, they weren't an actual funders. We might for. But it's a touch of small, participating, you have now, that's probably funny. And they said that.
Hmm.
You know, working to understand whether you actually. I mean, I think my neighbors. Here a moment. Increase their chances of having.
How it helps me empower the community to produce change? When it comes to budget, when it comes to pressuring me as a council member?
A little more of a question, because I know that council people have like designated funds, like that you can give to what you want. What is the allocation for that versus participatory budgeting? And also can we put pressure on you to, um, fund more, like the types of things that we want through your donor designated fund?
Yeah, and you're actually leading us perfectly into discretionary funding, which is the second way community can get funding. So discretionary funding is, is the same process. Uh, you are, the council member has a certain amount of money, uh, that is given, allocated to them from the speaker and your budget. And through that funding, we can then use some money to allocate to non-profits, CBOs, we can even donate it to schools, like, um, council member Eric Ulrich donated a lot of money to school, like two to ten. Use that funding to feature their auditorium, P M sixty, and they were able to do an art program in the school. So, and this is funding from anywhere between a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars, to eighty-four thousand, to ten thousand dollars. Maybe it just depends on how much that, um, that organization, that CBO, that nonprofit is actually asking for. Now, the discretionary process for someone who's applying or an organization applying for discretionary fund is a little bit complex. It's actually really difficult to make it work, um, some CBOs don't know how to do it. You need to have a certain amount in your current account to apply as well. So I want to see a city where we can kind of turn this over to be a little bit more the easier process. Um, meaning having our office or end office, um, guide CBOs or schools or civics on how to apply for this discretionary funding. And it helps meet the needs in the community as well. And some places that I would hope to add discretionary funding is to CBOs that already work in the district or adjacent to the district or next to the district. I talk a lot about organizations called Tahiti Sisters, which is tasked, uh, to help dismantle gender-based violence. So they're just a gender justice organization, and they help women, particularly, you know, Caribbean and South Asian women, um, transition out of inclusive situations. Now, they're only a team of about two executive directors who are managing this. And it's really difficult for them to work in areas like the Twin Heights and Park, when there's no space for them to bring survivors to speak to them. Uh, so allocating space or giving them money to help them find a place to open up an office, or even if they need more materials or to hire someone else, this is how discretionary funds can be used. It's also being used towards schools, maybe there are schools within our district that need better infrastructure or need help with funding a program, that's how discretionary funds can be used. Now, back to Ariana's question about like, council members get different amounts of discretionary funds because the speaker of the city council holds a lot of power in deciding who gets what and how much. So city council, you might think is all about experience, it's actually about relationships. It's who you know and how well you can work with them to get a bill passed through committee to get funding for your community. If your coun, if your council speaker does not like you, you don't have a good natural relationship with that, it's going to be harder to fund your community. And I wish city council didn't work like that, but it does, and it's unfortunate. And these are the three ways we can change that. This is the three ways we can reclaim funding and put it right back where it belongs. Right here in our neighborhoods, right here in our blocks, in our homes, in our schools. So discretionary funding is a second way. The third way is.
We're going to need a question in the chat about discretionary funding. Um, it says, how about discretionary funding for expense budget items?
Oh.
Oh.
Yes. What does that person mean, like who are CBO and how much money they spend?
Sure, um, let me, that's, that's, I don't know, Eugene asked this question. Eugene, do you mind having a little more in the chat about, about what your question is?
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll come back to it?
Yeah, please. The third way, and I think, kind of almost one of the savvyest, completely complicated ways, and I've never really seen this happen in our district. I think a lot of the, the channels to get to our district literally and purely have been blocked. Like literally, it's hard for CBOs. Like I would love, for example, organization funding for the fake role, which empowers our immigrant communities, especially in this district where we have Spanish-speaking community members. When even, when we have fifty-three percent of Wainoa residents are Spanish-speaking residents. Um, and we need help with applying for exclusive workers' funds, uh, for applying for someone to represent them in court, for example. These are free services that they will provide, but they've never been. In fact, a lot of the organizations that have worked our campaign have literally never worked in our community before. And there are a lot of factors behind that. But one of the greatest ways organizations like Make the Roll, funding exclusive workers, um, workers' justice programs, actually get legislation passed at city council is through legislative campaigning. And the way this works is a little intense, but it can be done. It can be done here in our community with CBOs and organizations that already exist. And whether you're a CBO or not, your movement base, you can do this. The first is figuring out your goals for funding, figuring out your strategy. What is it that you want, and you're all, majority of you are sticking to that goal? Whether it's fighting resilience, you're talking about funding our schools, or you want better infrastructure on our trains, whatever that platform is at the city council level, you're thinking about your goal, you're deciding how much it costs, what's your strategy, who are your key partners that are going to build with you? Because the bigger, you know, your movement is, the more likely it'll get passed, it'll make noise, media attention will come to it. And then you've got your partners that you're building. Then you go and you pressure me, and you say, hey, I've got this organization, this organization, this organization that wants to see this done at the city level here in this community. How do we do that? I say, well, I'm going to propose this in city council and bring this to our legislative body. And someone at such a office, the city council is going to say, a lawyer is going to be staffed. And they're going to write this bill, whatever that bill is, whatever that legislation is. We're going to look at funding, we're going to look to see if it's, if the bill already exists in some junction. Like another council member wrote something similar. We're going to see how much it costs, what it's going to do to pass something like this, and garner support. And then it gets eventually, it creates the bill, and hopefully it gets passed. But it's a very long process and one that you need to be very consistent with. But I wanted to show you these three things, participatory budgeting, discretionary funding, legislative campaigning. Because these are the three ways that I know we can secure funding in our communities. It's literally about how you want to spend money, what is important to you? And what is important to your neighbor? That's also really, really important. Because what's important to you might not be important to your neighbor. That's why getting to know who cares about what in your community is really important. Being in community with that is even more important because you're sharing with them and you're learning what it is you want for this district.
Do you need to share your sort of project that, maybe not in twenty twenty? Previous participatory budget project that looked back on this community?
No, that's a really good question. I, because I've never participated in, um, the mainland where I'm from, Over Park, I don't know what was that here. Margaret, do you know the name of the?
Yeah, so I think it's over on Shoreham Parkway. All of the construction, like you said, the, um, skate park, and all of the construction that's happening right now, same like one-on-one, one-on-two, or, or, or. It's holding on years ago, that they wanted to like build those things, but I think, not that. But I'm going to say, like, the community, okay.
Like the parks or like the.
I'm sorry.
Like the parks, like the little park, parks, like the skate, skate, skate floor, the little people, quite a park, like the kids.
Yeah, so like, there's a playground, one-on-eight, right, there's a skate park, and now this other move, it's starting to be obstructing right now. Um, it's not, I just know the one-on-one, one-on-one, it will be like a. It's only for. Yeah, it's only an offer for. So we are all proud of that movement on the, and then I'm looking for. So those are the things.
We're going to be seeing. Do you know what the power?
Oh. I mean, that would be, I mean, yeah.
And bring up people to go.
But that's a good question. And honestly, I've seen some examples that I've learned about across the city, and actually the other states. People do participatory budgeting for like community gardens, um, or, uh, maybe a big farm, or maybe a mural in the community, uh, maybe a community library. People just really to think that sometimes folks think the big picture, which is totally fine. And sometimes people want to build in a smaller way, and that's totally fine too. It just literally, but ends up happening with participatory budgeting, which is the cool part, but also kind of like, man, this is what's happening is, let's see, you're all in a group, and you're on a group, and you decide on a really cool project, both of you, the community then votes and decides which project is the one that gets money. So that's almost like, not necessarily the catch, but it's, it's, it's how you sell this project. Incentivize it, it's how you talk about it, um, and how you explain what this community is seeing back from that project too.
At what point do you?
At what point do you, uh I guess the shortest way to ask is besides our taxes, where does the money come from? Is it someone who is-
Majority is from the tax, our taxes.
Majority of your taxes is better.
In your state.
Uh.
And some is spent on it, which is also-
I guess tickets, if, if, if people buy, you know, tickets, buy tickets, get tickets, market tickets, yeah, where does that come from?
That supposedly also goes back to our city budget.
But, but it goes to the, to the police or does it go to?
It goes, it's supposed to sometime, for some cameras, they said, and Steph and I were talking about this with you before. It's supposed to go back to the community in some case, but it doesn't. So do you happen to know how special the tickets, like when someone gets a ticket, if it goes back to the community at all or to the city?
I think you're a TV TV ticket or something.
Yeah, it also depends on the ticket.
Yeah, so that is-
Let's say we get a ticket, like a traffic ticket, like you're supposed to be.
Yeah, those are all kinds of things. It's a part of the record.
Yeah.
I guess I, I'm just trying to think about things that are, that I already find useful.
Yeah.
That, you know.
Yeah.
And so if, in a, in a sense, um if you, if the city affords that illiterate laws and find people who are literate, then that money should go back to, you know, resiliency and keeping the neighborhood clean. But if those things don't go back or literally don't take place, so then, I guess, I guess I've got a question. It's like, where, at what point do you look into where the waste that's happening?
Yes. So that's my job.
Right.
Because city council has pretty jurisdictions, it's literally approving a New York City budget, it's land and street zoning, and then the third is like over set, over city agencies. That budget process is serious, the most serious jurisdiction of your city council role. When I was in, you're gonna see it, we're gonna have a trash out there come out soon, about garbage, really about garbage. It's so interesting because we always think about what we want in terms of punishment, who's receiving the punishment, and who's the person that's like on the other side. And in our sense, in our community, there's trash everywhere, right? For, for folks who live here and, and it's the beach, it looks different. So, parks look different. District thirty-two has less garbage cans than many other districts across this borough or this city. So when I think about how the funds that are distributed and also seeing how it's going to be funded about this community, that's what I would be pushing for. I would be saying, I need this for my community, this is what I'm advocating for in the New York City budget, and I wanna see allocated in that line by line intersection. Perfectly, I'm gonna put that.
I think because we're unboxing it and then I was where, at the point of saying, um, a story, because you just literally got a ticket because the outside of our area, there was garbage there, it was about a hundred and something thousand tickets. Because there's garbage and I said, well, that's fucked up. And then I turned around and there's no garbage can. There's not one single garbage can on the corner.
Mm-hmm. In fact, that's true of many blocks across the entire district where you're walking around and you're looking for garbage and you can't find it um anywhere. And so, of course, if there's no garbage, it's almost like, how can we blame someone for running it on the floor?
So I, I always say, I, I would pick up after, but at the same time, like, more than she, like, it's just so nice.
Right.
I wanna write a letter and then it's like labor work.
Right, right. And your council members are supposed to help reduce all that labor and work by making sure that we have things equitably distributed to this district. Now, a lot of the time, you'll also see some council members who are making, yes, morally, there's something terribly wrong with it. And I'll need to actually share what happened a year ago with our, our, our budget, our New York City budget, where you'll see that council members across the city might have guessed but so many people might have wanted to be allocated funds for the monorail project in other places. And there's a lot of confusion and upset and noise like that. And something we also need to think about is a lot of those council members were given the money they needed for their community, so they voted yes. And that's a really complex ones. It's a really complex ones that's really difficult for people who don't get a chance to look in and looking at it from the top, don't understand. And that's what makes this even more complicated. That's my, sorry, but I, so that's all. But these are the things I want us to really think about is you're allocating for what we need of a community, and that's why I asked you, what do you want from the city too? Because there's gotta be a balance, which we can film. What we can get for our community in an equitable way and also what we can give to the city. That's the most difficult question there is. And that's why I ask.
I just wanna say, just again, as a wrongly resident, who shares this people page with the entire city and the city, I do feel that the city should consider the fact that we carry a pretty heavy burden during the season where we've got thousands of people like this. Um resources aren't that much more increased as far as the cleaning. Um there's no support on preservation at all, I mean, at all. We had neighbors make signs, like paint signs and put them in the doomsday offices because there was zero enforcement. And again, it's, you know, the short run part would be what it is, it really, um, like the parking enforcement, you talk about tickets, you talk about all this. There's gotta be some mechanisms to track, you know, the kind of revenue that's being generated from parking tickets.
Yeah, that's all the new legislative legislator. Like when you're approving the budget, it's literally like, that's a negotiation, those are the things you look at that line by line.
Right. No, and I'm just saying, is there a way to get work, residents, about like revenues generated here during the season on sales tax and things like this? It's, it's just, it's numbers, it's just like, I would imagine that as a city, you also never look at that data. It's insane. Well, you know, I live on this, but I realized that it suffers from a huge number of visitors during the season. How do we?
Right, and that's the type of bill, bill that would put into legislation where you're talking about gathering that data, you're talking about how you're protecting your youth in a way that helps enforce our environmental resilience without also hopefully not punishing anyone in this way that makes them not a contour beach anymore. Because there are other beaches you could go to, the Rockaway Beach. It's great that it's free.
It's the best beach.
It's the best beach. You want folks to come back, you also want them to feel like this is a care, this is a community which people live and that needs to be recognized. And also, as a visitor, you play a role in taking care of our community and how do you do that? If that means that we have folks on our, on our, that are residents that are paid to them to workshops at the front of the boardwalk, that's awesome. That means we're giving someone a job, they're teaching their own, uh, they're in their own community, and they're teaching folks to then teach other people. Education is always down to play the big issue in how we can save our environment and how we can care for our community. It's, it's the will to want to do that and write legislation to do that.
Kind of playing off of the chat that he gave us. With your educational and moral expert opinion, looking at our greater community, what would you say are the three areas that are most underpriced? Does it mean like it may be your top priorities, but you're looking at it as what the need is and what the funding is? What, what is the name of certain of our communities here? I could have.
Okay. So like only three? Uh I would say, when I think about quality of life, uh and this is just because I'm just coming off writing, looking at our outfit that's coming out. I, if you've ever been depressed or anxious in your life, it's really hard to simple tasks like the vision, or taking out the trash, or taking a shower. Things that might seem easy to people become really difficult. And when I look around our community and I see how unkept it is, I think about us living in a really depressed district and a really depressed city and a really depressed borough. Something as simple as there's no trash on the floor helps me feel like I'm a valued community member when I walk around. When I walk around Ozone Park, right by where Rochelle lives on ADA Street, where there's no light, you're coming off the subway, there's trash everywhere. I think nobody cares about us because they left us to live like this. And so to me, fully funding and looking at how D S and Y spend their money in this district is incredibly important. And that will help a lot of, alleviate a lot of the issues we're seeing on the boardwalk and the beach when it comes to readiness. When it comes to giving our, it helps resolve that idea of economic security for our community members to then work in their community to clean it up. If people are literally volunteering to clean up the bay, the beach, our parks, and our neighborhoods for free, we definitely wanna make a point. They can be. If you're doing this out of the kindness of your heart, then we could do that, provide jobs, but we wouldn't feed up our communities. So that's one way. The second, the second is everything we can possibly do to add to climate resilience. That's actually like my number one. Trash and resilience are the same thing. They really are. So that's adding to the climate resilience plan that we have. The other, the biggest problem right now in our city is that our stages don't necessarily talk to each other when it comes to resilience. And that's the most frustrating part. And they definitely don't talk to our community members. So you have Army Corps doing whatever they want half the time, deciding on plans, and that's federal level, but it still matters to us as a community down here around. We'll have to deal with the noise change, noise pollution, the changes, the aesthetic of the community, and how resilience is built. And then, of course, making sure we're investing in our schools. That will always be number one because schools create communities and communities create schools. We live in this school, District twenty-seven, which used to be, it still sort of is, one of the lowest performing school districts in the city, if not borough. We have children at the third grade level, we're performing at children with disabilities, twenty percent pass rate for ELA, third grade ELA exam. Our Hispanic students in the, in the, in the district at twenty-five percent pass rate for ELA, twenty nineteen ELA exam, that's old data in our community. Just imagine now, for this year. So funding literacy, expanding Medicaid, prepaid seats, um making sure we're pushing for community, that some of these need four million dollar sponsorship fund to a school that's in my own city where I live. Those are the things we wanna push for in city council.
I need to be able to.
I'm sorry.
It's just we, we, uh, continue to talk about the trash. Oh.
It's there.
It's there. It's there. It's all, it's all, it's all, it's all trash out there. It's not take out the garbage.
I don't, I don't like this, cannot put on this, but my, my thing about it is, and my question about it really was leading to, um I don't believe in picking up other people, and I honestly don't believe in, in climate, I believe in not creating trash. I believe in people taking it with them. Um I believe that trash cans are unnecessary in that some of the ten thousand people that we leave working should also be educators. We need people on, how much, where do you want to go? Because we can't be paying for the next thirty years for sanitation to take all this trash to landfill and then escalate. It's like really, it's a way of the thought.
Right.
And so for like, you know, to clean the pipes because it's like unnecessary things get washed. I mean, the amount of times that we've had issues in the old houses I lived here, the, the draining is insane. So these things are, the, the, they start with our choices as consumers. We can purchase some trash from people who never pay for it. It's our money that is going to pay to dispose of all this trash.
Right.
Whether it is through crimes or taxes or, you know, a ticket that they get, we got the same ticket because there's, you know, a folder in front of our house.
So, so I guess my, my question back to you then is, how do we get here?
Exactly.
Like, how do we honestly get here? We're the coastal district. We need to be by example, right?
Exactly.
How, how do we get here? And in what world will we get there? And right to the end is already up there.
Immediately.
Yeah, yeah. Community education.
And there's the thing, like, I honestly, I, I don't, I never like descend people for like throwing their trash. I'm like, look, tell them, they'll do better. I know many few of the signs, instead of saying keep it, keep the beach clean, the sign says, send your trash to me.
Yeah.
I don't, I feel like they don't know.
That's why I was saying, but they're, they're.
Tell them.
And it's like, it's not a lot of our.
Yeah.
Just something you said, which I totally agree with, and I don't understand why, because I think of train stations here, wrong with these that look like abandoned, scary. You know, like this is the city, like, I don't understand why in the world things are not painted, like, why are things promoted? Why does it look like there's no investment in infrastructure? And like, you know, I lived, we lived in Miami for many years and one of the things that I always enjoyed about that is the sense of aesthetic and just how it gets to the quality of life. And it, it's not about, it's a little bit about just like, make only you all accountable and say, it's not acceptable to have rusted train station entrances when people go up and downstairs, right? You're maybe even mentioning that people, lights, that should be zero, they're spreading. The fact that it goes on, it perpetuates, it's hot, I don't talk about it. I just think it's like, and I know I didn't do this, but I think it's a good start. Um how do we get participatory budgeting here?
I literally would say that I would want that, I'm a, I'm a city council member and would go ahead and find the staff member who's going to be leading that uh participatory budgeting. And it doesn't have to be a separate staff member, it could just be someone who does like, is a community lead, for example. And they also need participatory budgeting in our, our, uh, in our community. Then we find volunteers, potentially in our neighborhood, that would want to, the project will get the word out about teaching people about participatory budgeting. Then time, a timeline for, it will take like a full year to then uh come up with projects and guide people through those projects and how to present and where to present and hold town halls, their folks can present, and then there's voting. So there's a lot of, it's like almost needing a class for a year on a project and then hoping that they present at the end. All right, is that a question?
So like a year or two with the back of the bell and uh it looks like very poorly worded referendum type things where you don't know exactly what you're voting on. But there was a whole uh like civic engagement commission, like the formation of a civic engagement.
That's right.
And so I know that they, I guess actually learned when they started, it came to one of our events a few weeks ago. But what is, are they involved, like, in helping?
Yeah, it would help with that as well. We also have now a youth uh participatory budget program. Where folks who are like, and we're like teenager, for example, they're not well, well about, can create projects, propose them and also get that funded too. So yes, that's it.
So is there a role to try like to vote participatory budgeting to council people or is it to support when our?
Yes, there, there is, there, there, that, yes. And there's organizations, there's just literally a nonprofit that's all about participatory budgeting. Who presented this information to me uh as, hopefully a council member of that, to then uh share with my community. So that I can have my in, on, on doing it myself. Uh and I've already bought in and that's the second question. So you'll continue on that. Go ahead.
Question, and you made that this, made about. Where does the money for participatory budgeting come from? Because I think of this district, what scares me for you is how we possibly meet the needs of people, you know, in Zalmore and people in Howard Beach and people in Greasy Point.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Alex. Yeah, scares me too. Uh, figure it out, figure it out. You'll just be everywhere, okay? Well, uh, well, I just wanna answer your first part of your question. It's through the public budget. So it's our tax dollars, any way that goes towards that hundred billion that I was talking about. Once I say I wanna participate in participatory budgeting, then I'm giving either between one million to two million dollars. Like for example, Shahan Hadees District, a she's council member, a lot in, in the Parks and Forest area, Kensington. She was able, when she worked for Redlander, uh, is a predecessor, they had one million. But like Carlos Machaca, Machaca's district, they had two million dollars in participatory budgeting to play with. Two million dollars.
That's a lot.
Yes. Can you imagine where, where around, the two million dollars? I'd love to live there, maybe District thirty-two.
Do you decide how much, like you ask?
No, it took, yeah, it depends. I would ask for like something among that funds where the city is allocated. It also could depend on history, so looking at like how a council member uh already did it, but I would like ask for how much. I, I'd also like, how much can we manage too, right? So let's say our first year, we're doing- So let's say our first year we're doing participatory budgeting, that'll be, that'll be 2022. Uh, let's say we ask for a million and really piloting and seeing how that goes. Do we have a staff member that's able to do it, our volunteer is consistent? Did it depend on the neighborhood? Could we do it throughout the entire district? Could we do it in neighborhoods that be, that, that be more equitable? In that case, a lot of the neighborhoods, like maybe we, certain neighborhoods across the district that would be able to participate and some that wouldn't. All right.
Sorry, you didn't answer it for it. But, um, when you ask me to do participatory budgeting, can that, like one term per term, one year?
It's a year.
It's a year. So we missed years.
We've missed years, yeah. We've missed years. And this is not to say, I don't know why we missed years. You know, but I do know when I, what I've heard about already change participatory budgeting. But I think it's such an intense process that if you don't have the folks who want to volunteer to do it or staff that can handle it, it then becomes a deep burden. Because now you're allocating that money and you can't not do it, can't back down. So I think what ended up happening was maybe it was just too much capacity and the council member said, listen, we can't participate, we don't have the people to do this. Or two is an education factor. Three could be frankly, just like advocacy and not wanting to do it. It's too much work. So like, there's a lot of factors that I pointed to, probably decided to cut here.
But you have to pay for a lot of the, and hire more than.
Right, which is why I'm being proactive now with all of you. You were all, some of you might count each other, or some of you are meeting each other for the first time in this space. But you'll remember this town hall, you know I wanted to do participatory budgeting, start thinking about something you want to see in the community that we can spend money on. Share more of the art. I, I just want to thank each other and everyone of you and those of you on our Zoom for hanging out with us today and learning. I hope that you feel like you're taking something away today. Would anyone want to share what you're taking away?
Because. You're very accessible and kind and just really, you know, engaging, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. What I feel like I'm taking away is a community that wants to see this happen. This circle of life where you feel empowered as individuals, as people, as neighbors. Know you can come to someone that's going to advocate for you in city hall, in our communities, on our blocks, at. And together we're going to change. Because as much as my one vote is impactful or not impactful, at the end of the day, the community empowerment that's going to come from for that change, we should just don't want to. Hope you can see that.
I don't know what to take away, I think I feel like people are bringing up power. Like, I don't know if it's a takeaway, but like that will, like taking off, you know what I mean? So it's so, like, I've never been done before, I've never experienced that.
Good, good, thank you. And if you're leaving here with more questions, then I'll be mine.
Thanks, everyone. We'll talk to you soon.